County of Great Barrington. You have your hand up.
Oh, God, Steve, you know what? Let me um that I'm still town of Great Barrington because I'm logged on from the finance committee. So let me get out of there. I'll come back in. But are you going to promote the finance committee up to panelists as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna come back in and it's me. Okay.
How are we doing, Steve?
Good, Eric, how are you?
Good, good, hearing okay?
Perfect.
All right. A meeting such as this, is there going to be an intermission for more popcorn and drinks or?
I would like them to serve pizza, but I couldn't figure out how to do a Zoom meeting. Anne O'Dwyer, you you should be promoted there. There you are.
I am promoted.
Perfect.
Steve, if I can help with any of the again of the Zoom presenting stuff, just let me know.
Okay, that'd be great. If I need you, I definitely will ask.
Yeah, you'll need but just a heads up, you need to make me a co-host for me to do anything.
Okay.
Right, but I do have all of Scanlan's reports downloaded and scanned and prepared to share if anybody has any questions.
Okay, perfect. It is six o'clock. I believe we have both the entire select board and finance committee here, and I will get started. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's June 16th, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board and Joint Meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No interest in attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to Mass General Law 7C 30A, Section 20F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. So this meeting is being recorded by CTSB, it is being recorded by the town, it is recording being recorded by the Berkshire Edge and the Berkshire Eagle, as well as other members of the public. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair, the listing of agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may impact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So we'll start with a roll call of each board. Phil, do you want to start with? The finance committee?
Phil, you're muted.
How about a roll call of the finance committee?
This is Anne O'Dwyer. I'm here.
Meredith O'Connor here.
Tom Blago, present.
I think Michelle is going to be joining us.
Michelle is in transit and Michelle will join us shortly, hopefully, and I'm here as well.
And for the select board, Garfield?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Ed?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
And I am present, the entire select board is here. I will turn it over to Mark and Sue.
Thanks, Steve. I'd like to just introduce Tom Scanlon from Scanlon and Associates. He's here tonight to present the fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty audits. So Tom, turn it over to you.
Sounds good. Good to see everyone, at least on screen anyways. It's been a guess it's been a long eighteen months for everyone. So you do you have the two audits in front of you. Just wanted to go over just like what an audit is, what's our main objective? Our main objective is to apply on their financial statements. The town did receive two clean opinions for both nineteen and twenty, which is always good. Always good to see. Especially if you go into the bond market, if you're applying for any grants, that sort of stuff. Just want to walk through probably was walk through twenty financials while they're going back to nineteen. So the twenty financials on page three and four, that's the audit opinion. Like I said, it's a clean opinion as far as the town's financial accounting ledgers, the upkeep. You know, very sound audit practices. And then as guys want to walk you through the financials is on page fifteen and sixteen. The thing with governmental financial statements, they're very unique. You actually have two balance sheets and a government's financial statements as compared to like in the private sector to companies, you have one balance sheet. So you have like just you have two measurement focuses. On so on page fifteen sixteen, that's your entity-wide financial statements. I think probably the only ones that really get use out of these are accountants. They're on the full cruel method of accounting. As you look on the balance sheet on page fifteen, you'll see capital assets are recorded as an asset there. And they're being depreciated. Again, you don't have depreciation in your budget. So this this presentation is more on the long-term focus. And it's like something that would jump out at you is if you go under unrestricted net position, you'll see a negative five point three million. It's always not good to see your unrestricted net position in a negative. The two drivers of that are OPEB. You can see under non-current liabilities, your OPEB is eighteen point four million. Again, OPEB, it's it's the acronym is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is the promises you made to your retirees to pay a portion of their health insurance when they retire and that is one of the drivers of the five point three million negative. And also the net pension liability, which is right below it, but you are on a funding schedule or you pay an annual assessment to the county retirement system. I believe that's going to be fully funded twenty twenty-two. Unlike OPEB, which you don't have a funding schedule. So these are the primary focuses on these, I don't think, questions that people have on the entity-wide statements. That's always good. And then on pages seventeen eighteen, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I did. I did. I guess I did have a question. I was noticing that the unrestricted, so if this is OPEB, the unrestricted two thousand nineteen was about seven and a half million and it's gone down to about five and a third. Is that just fluctuations or is there something we've been doing? Should we be pleased with ourselves or, you know, it could look different next year?
You should be pleased with yourself because I was just gonna go that on next thing, so you could segue.
Happy to help out.
So on pages seventeen and eighteen, these are more your traditional financial statements, which is the finance committee and board selecting they can relate to. Again, they're on the modified accrual, so you don't see depreciation on here. You don't see full accrual where what you bill you're putting in. As you look down under the general fund balance sheet on page seventeen, unassigned, you'll see your unassigned fund balances seven point three million. And basically, what unassigned really represents to you is your free cash and your stabilization fund balances. So if you take the two together, plus some gap accruals for six-day receipts, that will will come to the seven point three million. For a town your size, that is very healthy. And I think your your financial practices and your beliefs and your policies, I think they're very sound. So and then as a benchmark, a bond rating agencies look at you, they are really looking at unassigned fund balance and how it compares to your total expenditures slash budget, but your budget's around the twenty eight point five million. So that number is roughly about twenty-five percent, which is an outstanding benchmark. Generally, they like to see bond rate between ten and fifteen percent is is very good. Anything above fifteen is excellent. So when you're in that range, it's good. One of the drivers of that in in twenty twenty, hence we can see the leap is on page eighteen, that's your basically your change in fund balance. And if we focus on the general fund, you'll see your general fund increase two point nine million dollars, which is very good. Bond rates will look at that and say, geez, you're you're increasing your general fund. And the two big drivers of that is if you go over to page twenty-one, this is your budget versus actual, just for the general fund. You can see as we lay it out, you see the original budget and final budget and then the actual. And as we look at compared to what you budgeted to what you took in for your revenues, you exceeded your budgetary revenues of four point one million. And you'll see in the hotel room and cannabis taxes, along with license permits and fees, one point eight million, one point seven. The drivers of that is the host agreement for the marijuana facilities of one point five and also the excise tax of one point four. So it's marijuana that helped you get to the twenty twenty increase.
I'm sorry, this is Anne again, and I'm so sorry. I'm just trying to find where you are. And I just I just got a message from Michelle. She wanted us for the record that she's been on the call. She just is listening, so isn't speaking, but she isn't. So the finance committee is all here. But Tom, you mentioned, I see the four point one. Where are you getting the one point five?
It's so in the license permits and fees, if you go over, see the variance compared to the budgets, one point seven seven three million.
Yep.
Of that, the primary driver, and there's one point five community host fee for marijuana.
Oh, okay.
So you didn't budget for it. It came in as revenue. Component of the variance. And then if you go up to the one point eight million, just about between the hotel room meals and cannabis excise taxes.
Okay.
The one point eight, one point four is to deal with marijuana excise.
Wow. All right, thank you.
So those two swings, and as we look, then this is the calm all the way out is how you're how you're generating free cash and how, in essence, your fund balance should grow. So when you look at between your final budget, how you funded it, you used basically three million in free cash to fund on your budget, but then you turn around, you generated five point three. So hence, when you go over to page eighteen and see that large increase, these are the drivers of it. I did notice, I know I've talked to Sue about it in the past, and as you use free cash to reduce your tax rate. I'm not a big proponent of that. But I feel like you guys have a handle on your financial policies and how you're using it and going forward and reducing the tax rate with it. So where other communities can get themselves in trouble, I feel like you have a handle on that. Because usually when you do, I mean, you take your free cash and reduce your tax rate, it's usually a one-time revenues unless you have something dropping off in your budget. You can get yourself in a hole pretty quick. But that's the only thing I kind of caution you on as far as your your financial policies. But I do feel like you have enough expertise in your monitoring and you understand the reasons why you're doing it. That makes sense. So that's kind of that's all I really have to say about the financial statements that, you know, that that jumps out, you know, that two point three. Usually when you look at cities and towns, you don't have a big increase like that in the general fund. Usually bond ratings, these will look at a three-year period on you. And I don't think you budgeted any revenues for twenty twenty-two either to do or twenty in twenty twenty-one. So you're not budgeting the marijuana, which is good. In my opinion, you're increasing your reserves. Going for I do think, I don't know if that hoax fee will will stay around forever. So that's kind of if anyone has any questions on any of them.
Questions? Phil, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question back to the the OPEB or the other post-employment benefits.
Yeah. Yeah.
It just, you know, just the obviously, I mean, I think we all shouldn't be too surprised by this, but if I have this correctly, it's gone from at the end of two thousand eighteen, which we don't have in front of us right now, that was fifteen, roughly fifteen point seven million. And just in and at the end of two thousand, as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, it's gone to twenty point five million. So it's basically gone up five million, roughly roughly twenty-five percent in two years. So we all we all intuitively understand that medical expenses are going up. But I'm just wondering if there's anything else going on in that calculation, which triggered such a fast and steep increase in that number.
Well, I think you're looking just at the liability piece.
Correct.
Yeah, you also have to factor in the deferred inflows and outflows. If you look up, but then you know, GASB has defined certain things that aren't liabilities and they classify them as deferred inflow and a deferred outflow. So when you look at the liability, you have to factor in the outflows and inflows. So on June thirty, twenty twenty, on page fifteen, if you look for the deferred outflows of OPEB four point one, that is actually being amortized over a period of I think it might five point five years you have there. And what what those sort of things is change in assumptions. Maybe the medical trend went from assumption of increasing four percent a year. And it may the actual experience was one percent. So that three percent has to be amortized. So therefore, your liability could grow, but it's being offset by a deferred outflow. So you have to really take the net of those through the years.
Well, isn't isn't the the net OPEB liability, the net the net of all those factors?
No, the net OPEB liability is your unfunded accrued liability, actuarial based, less if you had a trust bond. That's why they call it the net pension.
Right.
But but the deferred outflow is going to be a change in assumptions. I have your actuary report in front of me. Can give you a breakdown. So the liability will grow and it put discount rate, discount rates have been jumping all over the place the past couple of years.
Well, obviously, this is this is a fairly, you know, elaborate calculation, but
Yeah.
So I'm not asking you to go too deep into the the details here, but again, just for the it was gone from in a two-year period and went from fifteen point seven million. Now, twenty point seven million, if I have that right. Twenty point six nine. I think how you calculated either, you know, twenty-five or thirty-five percent increase.
And if you and if you look at the deferred outflows, which is really an asset that went from eight hundred and seventy-six thousand to a million to four point six, so that will should reduce your liability because it's being amortized over a period of time. I believe that was a change in assumptions. That was the driver of that one.
So I mean, you know, I I'd certainly be happy to sort of have a if it's appropriate, I'd be happy to have a follow-on conversation with you about this calculation. It's pretty ardent. So I don't want to bog everyone down in this in this topic, but I would like to have a separate conversation with you about this, just to understand.
Yeah, yeah, you definitely, you know, I can I'll follow or mark my contact information, give me a call, email, absolutely, discussion. That's I know the calculations.
I know what like this and everyone else, but I would like to understand.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at your liability, it's a huge number. Do I believe it's eighteen point four? Probably not. I believe it's zero. No, it's all the conversations of being taken place that's going to it is. It is a liability of your town. There's a lot of drivers up there.
Yeah, again, we all understand it. It's a liability of town. It's a commitment that's made, and we all understand the medical costs are going up. I understand that. I just the the rate of that increase to me is is more than I would have expected, but we could discuss that in a separate.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, one thing you could, you know, encourages OPEB trust. I don't I don't believe you have an OPEB trust. You can
Okay.
I mean, that's something good. I mean, I wouldn't, if you do do an OPEB trust, I wouldn't put free cash into it. I'd have something that would go into your tax rate more than free cash because I I don't recommend taking a easily accessible reserve and putting it into something restricted reserve.
No, I agree, and we're not. Yeah, so. So I'm not advocating that, but I appreciate you bringing it up. But we could, again, we could discuss this separately.
Yeah, definitely. I don't see any other question.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, thanks, Steve. Tom, I had a just a question. I see that the tax leans quite a bit over the last year. And I don't know if you can speak to what's driving that or if Sue could. I mean, it went from four hundred and seventy thousand to a million fifty-nine thousand.
Yeah, and that and that's just principal base. That's just the real estate. It doesn't include crude interest or anything either. So it's going to be a little bit higher with accrued interest.
Does that mean that delinquencies are going up or?
Yes, it's a it's a driver of the issues that were in your tax collector's office. That doesn't surprise me, just well, the years of experience I have with it. I think there's a lot of back taxes that wasn't taken that we took on. And I believe it did. Did you get some large payouts in twenty-one, Sue? I think when we talked.
So you're muted.
Sorry about that. I'm not used to using the iPad. I believe you're correct, Tom. I do think we had some large payouts in FY twenty-one. I don't have the numbers handy, though.
Yeah, so there was so and you know, what created the situation, we got not we, but town got behind a tax title. So and fiscal year twenty, we took the tax takings for eighteen, nineteen and twenty, which is the result of the six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So it's kind of an unraveling of getting like the accounts where they were all rolled up into one. Now they're kind of like put back to the fiscal years and now the takings took place in fiscal year twenty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, one other question. Again, a little bit into the weeds a bit.
Yeah.
On page forty-six of both years, it appears that you added an additional just sort of schedule, which basically sums up the existing what you're describing as loan authorizations that have not been issued as of that date. So these are this is authorized borrowing that has not yet been actually funded or incurred by the town. So I it appears you added that for these years. It wasn't previously included. So I wonder if you could, if you were able to why that.
Sheer probably oversight to check that out because they should be in there. So you're saying they weren't in an eighteen?
I checked that and they weren't there, so I didn't go back.
Oh, yeah, because I'm eighteen was our first year. Oversight.
Okay. Well, I certainly agree they should be in there with something else.
Yeah.
Seeing myself.
This is sometimes our links, when we think Excel into the Word. Sometimes then you make the final PDF. There's some things that get hidden. That's the only thing I can think of, but that's just sheer oversight.
And would you would you is it is it fair to say that this is a having it included is a more standard approach as opposed to not including it?
Yes. My I'm looking at eighteen's now. My guess is if you look at eighteen in page forty-five, um, is blank at the bottom, like it's cut halfway.
All right.
I would say that link didn't come over.
Okay. All right. It happened. Yep.
Yeah, I would say.
Any other, any questions? No other questions? Not seeing any, Tom?
I don't see any. I don't.
Yeah. So I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No problem. And then, you know, if anyone has any questions about anything, don't hesitate to reach out, uh, to me anytime. I don't. I, I enjoy talking about OPEB even in the week.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay, there's two more things on our joint meeting. So it's the budget policy for fiscal two, two thousand twenty-three. Finance committee approved that tonight with a few changes that are in it. Uh, do I have a motion from the select board to approve? Then we'll discuss.
Um, I make a motion to approve the, uh, budget policy for fiscal twenty twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion by Lee, second by Ed. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. If I may briefly, just, it's just a, uh, for those that were not on the finance committee call, we, for expediency, uh, the finance committee is approving this, uh, budget policy, which as you see is very similar to what was used last year. But, but I think there, we have a view that a more comprehensive review of this policy would make sense. Um, and we need to budget, we need to budget the time for that. So we have a, uh, an understanding at, at, at finance committee that will do a more, uh, comprehensive review of this document in sort of next September, October-ish timeframe. And then hopefully we'll have time to then come to the select board and, and go through our thinking on that without being too, uh, too rushed.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Roll call vote. Uh, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, so it's unanimous. And last we have on here, the budget meeting schedule. So on the last page of the budget policy, there's a cal, a calendar. The budget meetings are highlighted as February, Tuesday, February first, Wednesday, February second, Tuesday, February eighth, Wednesday, February ninth, and then not highlighted, but Tuesday, March first would be the public hearing, all of these at six o'clock. I just want to make sure that that's all set with the select board. Everyone had a chance to look at the calendars and make sure that's okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm seeing, Ed, you're okay with it? So I'm seeing nods to the head. We don't have to vote on it. Finance committee already voted on it and we're, we're, we're good. We'll be there. Any other comments from either the finance committee or select board before I open it up to citizens speak for this part of the meeting?
No.
Saying none, uh, any citizens speak for this part of the meeting? Uh, Vivian Orlovsky?
Okay, I'm on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick comment, um, since I don't see, um, any other opportunity to, to say this. Um, I just wanted to thank Chair Steve Bannon for forwarding a, um, letter that I was able to put together over the weekend. I apologize for the late notice. Um, as, as you do, I have many other obligations. Um, but I thought that this information that I conveyed, uh, was either new research or something more important, which was the recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, uh, Board, uh, concerning the, their recommendations that, um, while they were made at a December first meeting, uh, the chair, um, was unable to, uh, due to computer problems, was unable to get them out until yesterday. So the, um, finance committee did not have this information, either the research that I provided in the letter or the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board recommendation, when they made their recommendation to the select board. And I would just like to point that out and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Vivian. Anyone else? Seeing no one else.
If we, uh, the finance committee wants to adjourn, we will go into the select board meeting. Uh, actually I do have media time.
Excuse me. I did not. I should take any media questions? Seeing none. Phil, do you want to just adjourn your board?
A motion to adjourn, uh, on the finance committee side. Okay.
I vote we adjourn.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
I, I agree. We adjourned.
So Steve, do you want to just send us back to being attendees or whoever?
I think we've got that down pretty well. We have, uh, thirty-four attendees right now and six panelists. So my count is right. I didn't throw anyone out. I wasn't supposed to. So that's a good sign. Okay, uh, this is now the select board regular meeting. First item is approval of minutes of November eighth, two thousand twenty-one and November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November eighth and November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Second. I have a motion by Lee, second by Ed. Any discussion?
Well, just one, one quick mind, very minor. Um, November eighth, there's a vote about the liquor license for the farmer's market, the Hoosie Dome. It just says all in favor and then it says four one. So I got the number right, but the all in favor could be confusing.
Right. So it wasn't all in favor. So can we?
So it's, it's the minutes of November eighth, it should just say motion passed or something like that.
Well, it needs to say however, all four.
It does list, it lists the vote as a roll call vote.
Okay. So we just need to remove that.
Right.
And doesn't say how each select board member voted. I would have. That's the important part. Okay. With that change, any other discussion? A roll call vote, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. And thank you for tape, for getting us caught up. The minutes are very well done. They have been very well done, but we've been very far behind and it's nice to see the select board caught up. We should, uh, set an example for everyone not lagged behind. And we, we finally have done that. We, you know, we had reasons, but it's nice to be, to be caught up. So select boards announcements, statements, Garfield?
I'm nothing at the moment.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, just, just a couple of small things. Uh, one, I just wanted to remind everybody that Berkshire Gromes doing their holiday market uh, this Saturday at the Barrington Community Center, also known as the Hoosie Dome from ten to two this Saturday. And also another fun event in Who's a Tonic is going to be, uh, Open Studios at Muse, which is at, uh, four thirty Park Street. And it's just going to be a bunch of artists showing them, showing off the space and, um, and all their work. So a couple of fun things to do if you're in Who's a Tonic this weekend. Thank you.
Ed? Lee?
Yeah, ju- just to mention that the, uh, CPA, um, step two or CPC step two applications will be due on December seventeenth.
Thank you. I have nothing. We'll go into.
Even I just may back up. It's actually something just in general, other than the fact that this is the time of year when we should all be thinking of each other, being kind to each other. I think as a select board, we should also set an example, uh, but please be kind to your fellow citizens. Um, when you're in the store shopping, also please be safe, uh, wear your mask, uh, when needed. But this is also the time of year to, to take care of yourself and take care of others. And, uh, I just wanted to get that out there that, uh, we need to treat each other well.
Thank you, Garfield. Mark, tell me, and Trish report.
Thanks, Steve. I just have a few quick updates for you this evening. Uh, first on my list is Who's Tonic Water Works and, uh, Code Red Messaging. I just wanted to mention that, uh, we received complaints related to water quality, um, you know, from, from time to time. And, uh, we do pass those messages on, uh, anytime there's work being, uh, done to the system. And, uh, anytime we're aware of, of pending work. So, uh, what I wanted to say tonight though, is that, that, uh, we also receive complaints from time to time about our messaging and, and the use of our code red system. And I just wanted to clarify that we are, uh, sharing these messages, uh, as a, as a, um, as a way to communicate with Who's Tonic residents on behalf of Who's Tonic Water Works. So our role is limited and we share the messages we receive when we receive them or as soon as possible after receiving them. So, uh, that's the reason why we include Who's Tonic Water Works contact information at the very tail end of those messages. And we encourage people to reach out to Who's Tonic Water Works if they have concerns or questions directly. Um, so again, you know, we're, we're happy to pass that, those messages along. Uh, and we do them as quickly as possible, but I just wanted to remind everyone that, that we are, uh, sharing that information, uh, to, to assist with our, um, to assist our customers in Who's a Tonic. And then my next update here is, uh, related to the American Rescue Plan Act or, or ARPA. So included in your packet for this evening was a copy of the ARPA survey, uh, and a summary of the results of that survey. And Tate Coleman's here tonight to walk you through our findings and then, uh, we'll continue to meet as a staff committee, uh, to work on a recommendation and an executive summary present at a later date to the board. But this is just to keep the, uh, information flowing and the conversation moving along. So that said, I'll, uh, let, let Tate take it from here.
Hello. Um, here I should be sharing my screen. Can you see?
We, we can.
Okay, great. Okay. So this is a, so the survey that we, that the town did on funds use for ARPA is what I'm going to be talking about today. Just a review of the results from that survey. Um, so it was distributed online and in print was available in Spanish. Uh, there was a twenty-one day or so input period. And it was promoted by the town, like it was on the town website for citizens. And then it was in print at the People's Pantry. Um, Berkshire South Regional Community Center sent it out, CHP off made it available. Uh, the senior center distributed the survey as well. And in addition to the Berkshire Food Co-op. Okay. So the categories that we have for possible funds use. Uh, so public health programs, including vaccination, testing, contract, contact tracing, um, medical expenses, and then also reducing negative economic impacts of COVID nineteen. So we can provide money to households for food, rent and housing, also money to small businesses. Uh, additionally, the other two categories are extra pay for essential workers and funding for capital projects, for example, water, sewer and high-speed internet projects. So the first, so I'm just going to run through some of the questions. It's included in the packet as well, but just to give some highlights. Um, so in terms of who took our survey, um, eighty-two percent were residents of Great Barrington out of the respondents. Uh, but so that means eighteen percent weren't Great Barrington residents, but out of those who, uh, did not reside in Great Barrington, a one-fifth, so about twenty percent were business owners or ran nonprofits in Great Barrington. Um, and seventy-two percent worked in Great Barrington. And those who weren't residents, uh, were in nearby municipalities. I think we had a couple from Pittsfield and Monterey possibly. So we also asked what the name of the street was that people, that respondents lived on. So two hundred sixteen of, out of our, so our, um, overall sample size was two hundred seventy-four. So out of those, two hundred sixteen Great Barrington residents gave their, um, the name of their street. So twelve and a half percent were Alfred Road. Then other co- common streets were Main Street around six percent, North Plain Road, four percent East Street, also around four percent in Castle Hill Avenue, three percent. I think Barrington Place was also another one that we had about three percent. Uh, in terms of zip codes, Great Barrington, Monterey, uh, oh, one, two, three, oh, sixty-eight percent, uh, eighteen percent from Who's a Tonic. And then, yeah, Pittsfield and then oh, one, two, four, five, which is just Monterey. Uh, got a few responses. Do you, so when we're asking if people work in Great Barrington, fifty-six percent worked in Great Barrington. Um, of course, a few people later on in the comments noted that they were retired. Um, so, you know, other people went to school in Great Barrington. So the, you know, this is useful information, but, uh, you can only draw so much from this particular metric. So also, we also asked, uh, participants if they owned or operated a business or nonprofit. Uh, so fifty-two responses, we had fifty-two responses, oh, about nineteen, about a fifth, nineteen percent owned or operated a business or nonprofit in Great Barrington. So out of those forty-three, or you know, about eighty percent were residents of Great Barrington. Um, how has COVID affected their business? So if they owned a business, we asked this question. So just to give a general overview of how this worked, so we assigned, so I assigned numerical values to, um, the answer, so very negative was one, very positive was five. And you can see the breakdown like seventeen percent very negative, um, somewhat negative, twenty-seven percent not affected, thirty-nine percent, somewhat positive, six percent, very positive, eleven to twelve percent. So then on average, so if we take the average of all of these, uh, based weighted average, based on the percentages of who responded, um, businesses who responded to this survey, um, they were affected slightly negatively generally. So two point six, seven out of five. So somewhere between somewhat negative and not affected. Uh, we also asked where the businesses were located. So twenty-two percent were in Who's a Tonic. Um, downtown Great Barrington, eighteen percent Stockbridge Road, eighteen percent. Uh, and then some on South Main Street, twenty-four percent were home office. Then there were some other write-ins, home painter within the boundaries or a couple. Also, we asked for all respondents now, um, how has COVID affected your household? So we again, use the same scale. Um, very negative being one, very positive being five. As you can see, generally respondent, household who's responded, they were generally affected slightly negatively. So like forty-nine percent said slightly negative. And so it averaged out to about slightly negative. Also, we asked, um, what would be most helpful to offset COVID nineteen impacts? So they were asked to choose up to three responses or, or three options. Sorry. Um, so two hundred thirteen out of our two hundred seventy-four responded. And then here's a graph which depicts, so money for rent utility or mortgage was the top uh, at fifty-one percent, then healthcare, um, thirty-nine percent, food assistance, thirty-eight. So the top three were money for, you know, the rent utility mortgage, healthcare, like mental health and then food assistance. And then we also asked. And then we also asked, um we asked respondents to rank the how the town, but like their top priorities for how the town can use the COVID relief funding. So you can see this distribution, so under fund, public health programs, reduce negative economic impacts, extra pay for essential workers, fund, and then water, sewer, high-speed internet projects. So as you can see, negative economic impacts, reducing those, that was the hot top uh response category where respondents indicated that as their highest priority. So I just went through. Um. Uh, so forty-six percent selected this of respondents selected this as their highest priority. Uh, twenty-five percent as their second priority, so a combined seventy-one percent indicated this, so reducing negative economic impacts as either their first or second priority. So there's widespread support for this um is what we can probably conclude uh based on our sample r- response. And then extra pay for essential workers, fourteen percent selected as their highest priority, thirty-eight or so percent as their second, but still over half indicated this category as one of their top two priorities. And then if we look at public health programs, uh twenty percent is their highest, twenty-three is their second, forty-four percent total and as first or second priority. And then, oh, that was a typo. I'm sorry, the last category, the funding water, sewer, and high-speed internet, uh that was a forty percent as their first or second category with a quarter as their highest, and then fifteen percent as the second priority. Um. And then we also asked uh, yeah, sorry, this one. This, this one, they were asked to rank uh their top five out of these categories. So as you can see, rent, utility, mortgage, again, top. Then childcare and healthy childhood services was also one of the top ones. And drinking water projects, also extra pay for essential workers, high-speed internet projects. Uh, and then we also asked what, this was an optional question, asking race or ethnicity. Um. So eighty-one percent were white, responded that they're identified as white. Thirteen percent didn't answer, oops, and then uh about two percent were black or African-American, two percent Asian, one and a half percent Hispanic or Latino, and then point eight percent were other. All right. Um. So that's my report. Oh, let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, um, four, go back to four B.
Okay, one second.
Well, I'm sorry, four A, I think it was.
This one?
Yeah, so it's been a long time since I took a statistics, statistics class. But it looks like a slight majority either had were not affected or had slightly positive, if you add the last three categories together. Right, a little over half, um actually, you know, it was either no, didn't affect them, or it was slightly positive if you combine the two. Is that right?
Um, let's see, so.
Thirty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, five point eight.
Right. Um, I can review that. I'm I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine. You can review it.
You don't have to do that now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my apologies. But generally, I did review it, yeah.
No problem, Tate. Anyone else? Lee?
Yeah, I just, Tate, I want to thank you. Uh, this is just a really, really wonderful um snapshot of the of the hard work that you've done, and I really appreciate it. I think, you know, the whole board probably does and and the town. So thank you very, very much for doing this.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tate. Mark, anything else?
No, that's it, Steve. Thank you.
Okay, next is license and permits. It's the riveting part of the show. It's the annual license renewals. Um. Lee, do you want to start your motions?
I do. Um, just one sec. Get all my fun stuff together.
Steve or Lee, we're going from the list that was emailed recently?
Yes, we're we're doing it by category.
Okay, so I will begin. I'm gonna begin with the um the license for the common victual or out all alcoholic license, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. So is that right, correct, I'm beginning there?
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the common victuary. Could someone just say that word for me once?
No, no, it's
because I'm gonna say this a lot.
Take all the fun out of it.
Can I, can I abbreviate that?
Yeah.
Vic or the common V.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to approve the common Vic all-alcoholic restaurant licenses the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Uh, James A. Modolo Post eighty-three forty-eight VFW, Inc. GB FBP, Inc., Four Brothers Pizza. Two thousand one, Inc., Bo- Bogey's Restaurant. Agave's Mexican Grill LLC. AGZ Holdings LLC Cafe Adam. Batch seven at forty-one, Inc., Manhattan Pizza. Brookshire Restaurant Group Three Incorporated, number ten. Cove Bowling and Entertainment Incorporated. Chrissy Farm Catering Incorporated. ESPDM, Inc., Baba Louise Organic Sour Dough. Fiesta Bar and Grill LLC. IE, Inc. JM Marcus, Inc., Bizen. Koi Asian Gourmet, Inc., Koi Chinese Restaurant. Kria Vistra, sorry for mispronouncing that, LLC Asian Breeze. Uh, Manish Raj, LLC Aroma Bar and Grill. Uh, Majake, Majake, Inc., GB Eats. Moon Cloud LLC. Rubner's Cafe. Schmaltz and Pfeiffer LLC Market Plates Kitchen Table. The East Asian Cuisine, Inc. The East Asian Restaurant. The Well Restaurant and Bar LLC. Thornwood Inn. Three Yanks and a Limy LLC Miller's Pub. Triplex Management Corporation, Inc. Triplex Cinema. Wood Anchor, Inc., Prairie Well. Um, Gikotek Mexican Restaurant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? These are all
Question. I don't don't know what the IE, Inc. is, please?
If my memory serves me correct, it's Butter Nut Basin.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You do this long enough, you remember these things, Garfield. Um, it's a roll call vote, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Continue, please.
I make a motion to approve the common V all-alcoholic in holders licenses of the following establishments or of the following establishment with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Brookshire Pleasure Hospitality LLC, the Barrington.
Second.
Discussion, saying none, Garfield.
I do have a question.
Sure.
What are all the requirements, if you will? I don't know what they are.
Mark.
Like, yeah, I can just speak to that. It it differs based on the type of establishment. But for for example, if a restaurant still needs to submit a hood inspection to the building department, we would want the uh license to be held until we receive that. So the different types of businesses have different requirements, but uh we will, as uh, you know, standard operating procedure here is that we'll hold those until uh everyone, every department signs off.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call vote, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Continue, please.
I make a motion to approve the common Vic wine and malt restaurant licenses of the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Brookshire Mountain Brewers Brewers Incorporated Barrington Brewery and Restaurant. Bazillion's Fine Food Limited. Great Barrington Pizza House, Pizza House. Najee's Catering Incorporated, sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the common Vic wine and malt without food license of the following establishment with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Mahawi Performing Arts Center, Inc.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Saying none, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I. You're unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the retail package all-alcoholic licenses the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Big Y, Big Y World Market, World Class Market, number twenty-two. Carjack Incorporated Plaza Package. Domain's Liquors and Fine Foods, Gorman Norton Incorporated. Guido's Quality Fruit and Produce Incorporated. Uh, Savvy Liquor Incorporated A and B Package and Variety.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the retail package wine and malt licenses of the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Brookshire Co-op Association Incorporated Cooperative Association Incorporated Brookshire Food Co-op. Rubner's Cheese Mongers and Grocers LLC.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Go ahead, Lee.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the common Vic licenses of all the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. So I'm just gonna read them all.
Yes, please.
Two thousand one Incorporated Bogey's Restaurant. I Sri Three LLC. Agave's Mexican Grill LLC. Azteca Enterprises LLC, Takeria Az- Azteca. AGZ Holdings LLC Cafe Adam. Batch seven at forty-one Incorporated Manhattan Pizza. Hindustan Incorporated Great Barrington Sanoco. The Well Restaurant and Barn LLC. Sheer Restaurant Incorporated. Gorman Norton Incorporated. Najee's Catering Incorporated. Cumberland Farms Incorporated. ESPDM Incorporated Baba Louise Organic Sour Dough. Uh, Manajra LLC Aroma Bar and Grill. Boyantino Country Club. JM Marcus Incorporated Bizon. Wood Anchor Incorporated Prairie Well. GB FBP Incorporated Four Brothers Pizza. Fiesta Bar and Grill LLC. Kria Vis LLC Asian Breeze. Three Yanks and a Limy LLC Miller's Pub. Vivaldi's Pizzeria. Chrissy Farm Catering Incorporated. The Bistro Box, Great Barrington Pizza House, Pizza House. Koi Asian Gourmet Incorporated Koi Chinese Restaurant. Brookshire Mountain Breweries Incorporated Barrington Brewery and Restaurant. Chico Tal uh Mexican Restaurant. James A. Modolo Post eighty-three forty-eight. VFW Incorporated. Stockbridge Road Realty LLC Fairfield Inn and Suites. Three is a Charm Incorporated Windflower Inn. South Main Donuts LLC Dunkin' Donuts. Brookshire Restaurant Group Three Incorporated, number ten. Lipton Incorporated Lipton Mart, number six oh six. Price Chopper, number one five five. So Savanny Liquor Incorporated A and B Package and Variety. Brookshire Health Systems Fairview Hospital Cafeteria. Big Y, Big Y World Class Market, number twenty-two. Matt nineteen twenty-six LLC McDonald's, number twenty-eight oh nine. Thornwood Inn. Majake Incorporated GB. Schmaltz and Pfeiffer LLC Marketplace Kitchen Table. Rubner's Key Cheese Mongers and Grocers LLC. The Swedish Baker. IE Incorporated. Triplex Management Incorporated Incorporated. Triplex Cinema. Cove Bowling and Entertainment Incorporated. Guido's Quality Food and Produce Incorporated. Brookshire Cooperative Association Incorporated Brookshire Food Co-op. Bazillion's Fine Food Limited. The East Asian Cuisine Incorporated, the East Asian Restaurant. Who's Anic, uh, who's a tonic, Five and Dime Pleasant in Maine, Moon Cloud LLC.
Have a second. I will uh recuse myself from Berkshire Health Systems Fairview Hospital out of an abundance of caution because I work there. I don't make money from their vending machines or in their cafeteria, but I will vote on all the rest. Any questions or comments? Saying none, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, except for for the health systems.
I make a motion to approve the weekday entertainment licenses the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Brookshire Restaurant Group Three Incorporated, number ten. Two thousand one Incorporated Bogey's Restaurant. James A. Modolo Post uh Post eighty-three forty-eight VFW Incorporated. Najee's Catering Incorporated. Fiesta Bar and Grill LLC. Unitarian Universalist Ch- Church of South Brookshire. Mahawi Performing Arts Incorporated Thornwood Inn. Chrissy Farm Catering Incorporated. Brookshire South Regional Community Center. Boyantino Country Club, Saint James Place. Triplex Management Corporate uh Corp. Incorporated Triplex Cinema. Guthrie Center. Brookshire Cooperative Association Incorporated Brookshire Food Co-op. Chica Tail um Mexican Restaurant.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Continue, please.
I make a motion to approve the Sunday entertainment licenses of the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Mahawi Performing Arts Center Incorporated. Guthrie Center, Brookshire South Regional Community Center. Two thousand one Incorporated Bogey's Restaurant. James A. Modolo Post eighty-three forty-eight VFW Incorporated. Fiesta Bar and Grill LLC, Saint James Place, Triplex Management Corp. Incorporated Triplex Cinema.
Second.
Um, answer questions? Roll call vote, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Uh, and I, it's unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the in holders licenses of the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Brookshire Pleasure Hospitality LLC, the Barrington. Briar Bear LLC Briar Cliff Motel. Kanji Incorporated Holiday Inn Express. Thornwood uh in Three is a Charm Incorporated Windflower Inn. Wind in the Pines. Uh, Chamage Incorporated Travelodge. Stockbridge Road Realty LLC Fair Fairfield Inn and Suites. Wayne Wright Inn LLC Wayne Wright Inn.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the amusement licenses of the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Two thousand one Incorporated Bogey's Restaurant. Brookshire Mountain Breweries Incorporated Barrington Brewery and Restaurant.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the motion picture licenses the following establishments with the condition that the applicants satisfy with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Mahawi Performing Arts Center Incorporated. Triplex Management Corp. Incorporated Triplex Cinema.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Unanimous, I go on.
I make a motion to approve the bowling license of the following establishment, with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Cove Bowling and Entertainment Incorporated.
Second.
Discussion? Saying none, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the class-two licenses of the following establishments, with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. Seven and Twenty-three Motor Sales. All-Star Auto Salvage LLC Formell Auto Salvage. DA Dempsey Auto Sales. Drecker's Auto Body Incorporated and Mechanic. JD Automotive Incorporated. QJP LLC Johnny's Garage. Tire kickers dot com LLC.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the class-three licenses of the following establishments, with the condition that the applicants satisfy all staff requirements. DA Dempsey Auto Sales. Drecker's Auto Body Incorporated and Mechanic. QJP LLC John's Auto Body.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. New business. Request from Peter Puchalowski, Attorney for the Community Development Corporation of South Berkshire, Nine Ten Housing, Inc. and Wayfinders, Inc. in accordance with section ten point four point eight of the zoning bylaw for good cause extension of special permit eight-eight-seven dash one-eight issued November twenty-six, two thousand eighteen for the work in a zone two of the Water Quality Protection Overlay District at Nine Ten Main Street, Great Barrington. Uh, explanation?
Hi.
Thank you.
This is the low and moderate income housing project at Nine Ten Main Street. One of the inherent problems in this process is that you need all your local permits to apply for state funding. And state funding is never quick, so you come to the end of your local permits and and you're still trying to get the money. At this point, we've scheduled January thirteen for a closing on financing on this. The planning board has extended the forty-hour permit and conservation is extending the order of conditions. The problem here is we couldn't get in the ground during the initial term of a permit because the funding takes much longer. So we ask you to extend it for good cause, that being that the way the order of business is on this, you couldn't get to the point of exercising the permit until after it expired.
So either Chris or Mark, when we if we extend it for a good cause, should we put a time on it?
Steve, I'm gonna open Chris's mic and see if he has any.
Yeah, I see his hand up too, so thank you.
Hi, this is Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, well, I think Counselor Pisolowski's email requested a six-month extension to the end of June of two thousand twenty-two. Is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, yeah, so I think your motion, if you're looking for a positive motion, would be to grant a good cause extension to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant a good cause approval through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. I probably messed that up, but.
No, that's correct. You have a second. Discussion or questions? Saying none, it's a roll call vote. Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, attorney.
Thank you.
Next is the senior tax deferral program. Promote a few people here. Phil Orenstein is the chairman of the finance committee.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And okay, there I am. Can we be able to put up on the screen the packet that we provided on this topic? I could do it from my computer if you could let me do it.
Yeah, I can open your permissions to do that. I don't have it in front of me. I just have the entire packet. So you should be all set to share your screen.
All right, so. Hopefully, this will work.
Are you seeing the share screen option?
Uh, yep, give me a minute. That work?
Yes.
Right. All right. Okay. All right, so. A few just introductory comments. The finance committee has spent considerable amount of time researching and deliberating the senior tax deferral. A great deal of this has included Vivian Orlowsky, and we appreciate her and we appreciate her and thank her for her enthusiastic advocacy on this topic. Uh, the packet, which we have in front of you, starts with a two-page bullet point memo that provides a brief overview of the program along with our recommendation. I'll go through it briefly and then we'll open it up for questions and discussion. Uh, there are various charts and schedules that I've provided in the packet, and we can refer to them as 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 the group would like to. In summary, the the finance committee supports the availability of the senior tax deferral program for Great Barrington. The key question for the town is who should be eligible for the program? In other words, what should the income eligibility eligibility test be? Who are we trying to help and what is the cost of that assistance? A bit of history, the deferral program is state law. Uh, and it was passed in nineteen seventy-four. About a hundred and sixty towns in the state participate in the program while a hundred and ninety do not. With the exception of some very small deferrals and league that happened several years ago, Berkshire towns have not used this program at all. Uh, we've had various conversations, and in particular with some of the other towns about this, and anecdotal reasons that are mentioned are for the lack of participation is the complexity and the length of the application. The important point is that is the need for the consent from your existing mortgage lender for the deferral. Obviously, that can be a difficult thing to obtain. Uh, concerns over the impact of those who will inherit your home. And just and probably very importantly is just a lack of awareness that the program even exists. Very, it's it's a bit of a mystery in certain towns. So looking at the memo, I'll go through the bullet points quickly. Like I said, the deferral program became Massachusetts law in nineteen seventy-four. Uh, since that time, there have been several amendments, and there's extensive guidance that's been provided by the state and how to implement and manage the program. So the the big picture there is that this is not a new program. We're not breaking any new ground here. A property tax deferral does not eliminate the tax obligation like an exemption does. Instead, it defers the payment until a time when the eligible homeowner no longer owns the home, such as when it's sold, transferred to a trust, or the death of the owner. Um, deferred property taxes plus interest accrued during the years of the deferment must be repaid to the city or the town at that point. The program is fairly flexible and that seniors may defer any or all a part of their taxes owed each year, provided that as long as they must continue to qualify. And the cumulative total of those deferred taxes, including the accrued interest, cannot exceed fifty percent of the fair cash value of the property as determined by the assess by the assessor. So that's really the key limitation on how much you can defer. Repayment of the deferred taxes and accrued interest. Uh, the state guideline on the interest is eight percent, and we'll come back to that. Like I said, as due in the property is sold or the death of the owner, unless the surviving spouse continues to defer. As of the date of death, the interest accrues at sixteen percent. That's a state law that cannot be changed. It does appear a bit onerous on paper, but that is that is the requirement. Uh, the state is as established eligibility criteria for the deferral. And the town's legislative body, our town meeting, can elect to modify those criteria within certain limitations. In summary, the current eligibility criteria, and these are all, this is, there are, obviously, there's extensive memorandum from the state on all of these criteria. But in summary, uh, this criteria is you must be age sixty-five or older. A resident of the state for at least ten consecutive years and have owned the property for at least five years. Uh, then there's the income test. The resident's gross income or in income or gross receipts for the previous calendar year cannot exceed twenty thousand dollars. And this income applies to either a couple or a single person. There are other senior tax benefits where there's separate rates for couples and singles. That is not the case for the deferral, and that that's as specified by the state. And gross receipts include all income from all all sources, including social security. There's no adjustments there. Like I said, the interest accrue is at an interest rate of eight percent unless it's modified. And importantly, any existing mortgage lender must consent to the deferral and the priority of the tax lien. The the town is would be getting a priority lien for these deferred taxes prior to the mortgage lien, so that's why the mortgage lender has to consent. And, you know, that is why is frequently the case that they would not consent to the deferral. So, uh, number four. As we mentioned before, Great Barrington can vote at town meeting to modify these criteria. Uh, most importantly, that relates to the income test. The twenty thousand dollar gross income limit may be increased. And this is, according to the state, it may be increased up to the income limit allowed for the circuit breaker state income tax credit for a single not head of household. And that number as of this year is sixty-two thousand dollars. So based on existing, based on current law, the town's option is to keep it at twenty thousand dollars or increase it up to sixty-two thousand dollars or any point in between. Some towns and examples are Brookline, Newton, and Sudbury. They have requested and received state legislative authority for higher income limits and lower age criteria. So they've raised the income limits to approximately eighty or ninety thousand in certain cases and lower the age criteria to sixty in certain cases. That again requires state authorization uh, through the state legislative body. I think the finance committee took the approach that that was not, we were really here to analyze our options in the current law, and any change in state law or requests for changes would be something that would be coming from the select board and and town meeting. We have the option to move that interest rate to keep it at eight or to move it at any any rate below eight percent. So we have a fair amount of flexibility there. So we, as some of you may know, we've spent an enormous amount of time researching this point and discussing it in great lengths over over the course of various meetings at the finance committee. Uh, and we've taken a great deal of of public input on this. In making our recommendation on the income limit, you know, we consider a wide variety of of information points, uh, input from the community, reflecting on what we think is fair and not fair. We spent a lot of time looking at what other towns are doing. Um, and there's a wide array of data points there, although we don't have the the luxury of of looking at what our neighboring towns are doing, because as I mentioned before, they're really just not participating in the program. So there's no clear uh, track record of what have our Berkshire of how Berkshire towns are approaching the income limit test. Uh, we certainly spent some time thinking about a hypothetical couple, a senior couple who are reliant on their social security income. Um, we looked at scenarios there. Obviously, everyone will be has different benefits in the social security program. So it's it's, you have to speak very broadly, but nationwide average benefit, that's nationwide, which so it'll vary dramatically, is about eighteen thousand six hundred dollars. So we spent, we pondered a a couple who were both, for example, who are both receiving social security benefits, and that's their sole source of income. Um, we did mention the, there was a a different data point on the social security benefit that came up in a prior meeting, which was about seventeen thousand five hundred. That's subsequently been updated, you know, by the federal government and is now eighteen thousand six hundred. So to conclude, so the net of all that is the finance committee recommendation to the select board is for an income limit of thirty-five thousand dollars and an interest rate of four percent. Uh, an important point there is, you know, we can, the select board can make these recommendations that can be approved at town meeting, and then we can elect in subsequent years to change those criteria. So we have flexibility to go back and change it based upon our experiences with the program. You know, broadly speaking, that that made a fair amount of sense to the finance committee, given that, you know, we we have a, it's very difficult to predict how this is going to go. Some observations is that, like I said, there is very limited capability and data to quantify the need among our residents for this assistance or to predict the volume of the applicants. Um, again, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a complex program and and difficult to uh, it may be difficult to get the approval of the mortgage lender, so uh, you know, typically towns have seen the applicants come in in relatively small numbers. I, we've all been searching around for relevant data points that'll help us understand the need and and what makes sense in terms of how we set this test. And purely just for context, here are some facts that that I would throw out there. In Great Barrington, the federally funded heating fuel assistance program um, actually assists about a hundred and ninety members of our community, but of that number, uh, sixty-three of them are seniors who own their homes. Uh, that is a totally separate federally funded program, providing up to about six hundred dollars of of benefits in the form of credits against fuel bills. There is a cousin of this tax deferral program, which was referred to as forty-one C, which the town currently provides. And that is currently providing sixteen seniors with a one thousand dollar property tax exemption. That's a full exemption, not a deferral. So happy to come back to that, but those are a few data points. It's important to note that while the program operates under established established state law, the usage of the program will require the time and resources from town staff. Uh, in particular, um, Sue and Ross Havory are a new assessor, and that obviously, they've both been involved in our just conversations and our research so far, and any implement implementation will require their time going forward. Uh, and in a similar vein, they continue to research various open issues on very technical issues relating to implementation. How do we, how do we deal with highly unlikely scenarios, but important to understand about what if a homeowner has an existing reverse mortgage? What if a homeowner has an existing federal tax lien? How would all that work? And we've been discussing that with Ross and Sue, and they continue to work on that. An important open point, probably from Ross's perspective, is that the the implementation timetable is 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 fairly complex in terms of if we go forward and people really want to know when they can apply, we'll probably need some guidance from him on on that timetable, and it's, it requires some research with the state. We'll probably need some guidance from him on, on that timetable and it's, it requires some research with the state. We also have the nuance of people could apply under the old income test and people will want to know justifiably when they can apply. Under the new income test to the extent it's approved at town meeting. Uh, and just one last, more general point, uh, you know, we've all done a lot of research on this topic. You know, there is a relatively long list of existing proper property tax exemption programs, mostly targeted at seniors. And they all have different eligibility criteria, different application process, different requirements. They're fairly complex. Um, you know. Taking a step back, I would, I would suggest. That at some future point, the town can explore ways to provide more. Comprehensive guidance to the seniors and how to navigate these various options. Cause we wouldn't want people who otherwise would want it and would qualify just to not do so because it's. It's way too complicated or they don't, they don't have good vision or they don't have good internet access or they just, they just, they find it overwhelming. So I think that that assistance would be, would be helpful. Um, and you know, that certainly relates to all of the other, um. Senior programs that are out there to assist seniors who are having financial difficulties. So on that point, I'm going to stop. There's a lot of other information in here, um, but I think I'll stop to. See if we have any questions and also to let the other members of the finance committee, um, make their comments if they would like to.
Any questions or comments from the slot board?
Yeah, I have a few.
Yes, go ahead. And then Lee.
A little more about the, what it is the staff's researching. Um, is you, you just said that. Uh, you expect to have answers before May, I assume before we vote on this.
Um, I'll take a stab at that. I, 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 the answer is yes, it really shouldn't hold up what we want to do here. These are. I would describe them as very technical points, uh, highly unlikely points, but. If you asked us right now, if you asked Ross right now, if he had an applicant for the senior tax deferral who. Would, you know, would, would be eligible. Um, but at the same time, uh, had a, had a reverse mortgage. You know, there is a little bit of ambiguity as to, as to the town's ability to say no to that for, for the obvious reasons.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a problem sending something not complete to town meeting as long as it's complete by the time it gets there.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't worry about that. I think.
Okay. The, um, staff time. Did he have an estimate, uh, Sue or hit or Ross about how much? I guess you don't know because you don't know how many people are applying, correct?
Yeah, I think it's unclear at this point until we, we have a better sense of how many people will qualify and apply. Uh, but I did open the mics for Ross and Sue if they have any. Any, uh, comments to provide.
I'll defer to Ross on that. Cause I think it's gonna be more of his time than in my area.
Ross, you just have to unmute yourself. You're, you're good on our end.
Sorry, how about now?
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult to say until we actually have an applicant that comes in. I mean, I think basically the majority of times just verifying. You know, the total income based on the information that we're going to require and then go ahead and, and processing it. I mean. It's a little bit difficult to say. I mean, only being that there's only two of us in the assessing office. But I'm sure we'll be able to handle it. I'm not overly concerned about it, but we won't know till we actually do one.
Okay. Um, a couple, just a couple more quick ones. The, if the, the rate changes every year. Does it change for the people who already have a loan out?
No, that's a good, that's a good question. If you, if it, we all, it won't change for the, for the existing deferrals when you.
Right. If we have some people at four percent, it stays four percent till they pay us back.
But yeah, exactly. But if that individual then elects to defer in a subsequent year, then they're locking in at that rate.
Um, I, okay, I, I know the number is tiny, but. If somebody is not paying twenty-five thousand dollars or five people are not paying twenty-five thousand dollars this year. The rest of the taxpayers are making up for it. I, it, is there quick math? I mean, I think it's pennies, right? Per other, for the other taxpayers.
Um, I, I know the calculation you're, you're referring to, um, and I'm just going to that table, um.
Yeah, I think you just passed it.
Yeah, I, I, I know what you're saying. I, I was reluctant to make that calculation because I think an important point is this is, these are all totally made up numbers.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, if we start, if we start. Going down that calculate, going down the road, that calculation, which is a very legitimate question. It implies that we know what we're talking about. Okay. And, and we don't, we don't know. How many people are going to reply for the deferral and what the deferral amount would be? So I'm just very reluctant. I mean, we could certainly do it as a follow-up. We're happy to do the math, uh, um. And but, but it, it implies, it implies a predictive quality to this number that really isn't there.
Okay. And then the last was not really a question, but I'm going to throw it out now if it's okay, Steve. So that anyone who speaks can speak to it, which is. You, I know at the finance committee, you were nearly unanimous on the four percent. I think Michelle. It suggested five percent. Um, a- at the rate of giving Michelle a heart attack, I think I agree with her. Um, yeah, Realtor.com has home equity line of credit. Anywhere from three point seven five to six point seven five. Uh, bank rate was similar. And it just seems to me with, you know, the, the. Social Security has just raised the cost of living by five percent. I'm just concerned. Lock, you know, locking into four percent. I, I'd feel a little more comfortable with five, but we can debate that. And everybody can comment on that as we go.
Thank you. It's going to be Lee, then Anne, then Eric. So Lee, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. I mean, part of my, my question really was to Ross and to Sue, um, about staff time because. You know, for me, um, it feels very complex and you know, I realize that town's not a bank and so I, you know, I just. I think about the, um, the options that seniors have, you know, whether it's reverse mortgage or, or various other, um. Options that they could see at a bank. So I, I just. My thought is, is just really on staff resources and time and is it something that, you know, we have the capability. Uh, and where with all to, to dive into. So that was my first, um, my first question. So. I realize Ross, you, you pretty much don't know, but you don't seem to be too, too worried about this. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, you know, like anytime somebody comes in for a senior. Uh, exemption, we ask them to bring in. You know, paperwork, social security statements, pension statements, bank statements, things along those lines. I mean, it's going to be similar. To that, they'll have to bring in that information. We'll have to review it, make sure that they meet the income requirements. You know, we can check and see now what their status is as an owner that becomes a bit complicated. If they're in a trust and they're not the beneficiary of the trust, sometimes that can be difficult to determine ownership. And I think that could actually take more time than, than confirming income eligibility. But it's a process that we're going to have to go through to make sure they meet the requirements as, as they are outlined. And like I said, until we do one, you know, we'll see. It depends how many we get. I mean, I, I don't think we're going to see that many of these things, but you never know. You know, it doesn't seem like it's been a real popular thing in a lot of other towns. And we'll, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Sue Carmel, do you want to just add before I go to Anne?
I, I do. Thank you, Steve. Um, I was thinking as Lee asked that question again, that really we. Need to ask that question of the treasure collector's office because someone's going to have to track. What these people owe us, um, from year to year and obviously. It's going to extend over multiple years in some cases. So I, I think that's something we have to consider that it may be more complex on their end. To have to track that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that was one of my, my questions or concerns is, is really the long-term, um, effects of, of this. You know, tracking it and, and you know, different staff members, turnovers, different boards, different, you know, votes. Um, and again, you know, because we're not a bank, I, I just worry, are we set up to, to, to really take this on? So thank you.
Um, let's go with Anne, then Eric, then Garfield.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I guess I just wanted to comment. About, I, I mean, I recognize it's time to, it takes time to set it up and get all the systems working. But somebody could walk into our offices today or tomorrow, I guess tomorrow, we're closed today. And say, you know, I'd like to participate in this program and I meet the income eligibility and the residential eligibility. So, and it's a program that my understanding is that the state makes available to anyone who's resident of Massachusetts. So we would have to do it anyway. Um, and so I do think, you know, this chance to sort of explore, how is it that we can make this doable? Is, is worth our time. And I guess I also just want to say, I guess I just want to say a few words about how we came up with the forty thousand and I. I, I will admit I struggled with the four percent as well, um, in terms of the interest rate and for exactly the reasons, um, that you noted. I mean, the forty thousand we came up with as Phil noted because. You know, the twenty thousand, even for one person who's on a very limited income, they would. They would exceed that most likely. They would probably go above it. So. We felt it wasn't going to make it possible for just about anybody to participate. And we felt that forty thousand was a good compromise between the very low state. Lowest, uh, maximum income limit and some of the higher limits we saw in, in other towns that's, that have far more staff resources than we have. And far higher, um, property values and median family incomes. Um, so I just wanted to give a sense of why we came up with that. Um, and again, we said thirty-five and that was thirty-five thousand. Correct. So. So.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, um, that I got the forty thousand wrong. It was thirty-five thousand was our recommendation.
Eric.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I guess I got a couple of parts to my questions and, uh, concerns. Um. So. The part about the sixteen percent that cannot be, uh, changed, that, that interest rate of sixteen percent. It's basically the same rate as say a credit card or something is. Is that divided between the state and the town or, or the? How is that? How do they come up with that number? And does that all state of the town or since the state says you can't change it? Is the state getting a piece of that?
No, that, yeah, that's, that's a good question. The state is not getting a piece of that. Uh, it's all going to the town. And I think the. You know, based on the research we've done, I, I think that the concept is that. They really want people to pay this off quickly when, 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 when the homeowner passes away. It's not meant to. Remain in place after that point in time. So is that a high rate? Does that pop out as being quite high? I, I certainly agree. Um, it's obviously, it came from a different era. Um, but I think the, the, the main, uh, takeaway there is that the state. Really wants people to pay this off promptly. Upon the transfer of the property. It's not meant to hang around as sort of a, a financing option at that point.
But I guess if, 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 you know, whoever was inherited or, or left the property. Obviously that interest can get out of control quite quickly. And in sense, I guess my concern would be just the imagery of. The town of Great Barrington taking somebody's family property, you know, so. Which I guess goes back to me being concerned. This, this is a great program and, and I want to help all the seniors we can, um, but. I, I don't know that I want to make this the most attractive option, uh, that's out there. And, and I guess that as far as. I'm concerned with the four percent rate. Um, and, and, and us, and like Lee said, we're not really a bank. So. At the end of the day, I, I also think I would feel better if we started off with a higher rate. And then see how things work out. And, and if it's not used commonly. I just kind of worry about the imagery of, you know, the sixteen percent if something was to happen. And, and it being. Everybody's first choice as opposed to going to a bank and sorting it out where they could get better rates and better terms probably, you know, so.
Well, if I can just make a brief reply point, I, I, those are very good points. I would say that again, the sixteen percent, sixteen percent, that we just don't have the option to, to change that is, is our understanding.
Um.
The, um. From a process standpoint, you know, there's no, it, it's extremely unlikely that the town will be foreclosing on anyone. It's really a case where, when the, when the property is transferred. Then the, the, the recipients of the, the people who inherit the house or buy the house. The town has to get paid back before that transfer is effective. So that's, that's the way I'd look at it. So it's part of the closing. The closing table there. Um, in, in terms of the rates. And one thing I would say is, is that. The rate and the eligibility criteria work together in that the lower the eligibility criteria on the income side. Then the more, the less likely that those individuals or that couple is going to be. Trying to arbitrage or sort of make money off the town by using the deferral program. You know, a, a senior couple who are barely getting, getting along on social security is highly unlikely that they can't get any kind of mortgage out. Mortgage products out there, maybe a. A subprime, uh, you know, reverse mortgage, but, but their options will be few, if, if any. Uh, when you start increasing the income eligibility criteria, then you can make an argument that those couples. Would have more options to do things privately on their own in terms of a home equity loan or reverse mortgage. And therefore the possibility that they may be just sort of trading off rates with the town and their bank is more likely. So the two things kind of work together.
Okay, thank you.
Garfield.
Yes, hi. Thanks. First of all, I want to thank the finance committee for doing the work that they've done. Um, and I think Anne for making the, the, uh, the. Or pointing out that this work would have to be done anyway. Uh, as far as the, is it being so, uh, complex, being very complex. I have to admit, I don't know all the financial aspects. I look at it a lot for myself in a moral point of view. And how we are as a town and the people that live in this town have made this town have been here a long time. And we do have the resources, I think, to handle this long term as Anne said, it has to be done. Um, Ross says he doesn't believe it would be a, a, a big issue. Um, I know Vivian has done some extensive homework. She can probably speak to it. Um, I can only say. That from gathering and speaking with her that this is not something that's going to cost the town a lot of money. Um, complexity should not be a reason for not doing something. Um, anything that's worth doing is usually complex and, 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 and takes a little work. There's nothing good is easy. Um, I think four percent is, is a great idea. Again, we are not a bank, but I think these are people that probably would not. Go to a bank as I remember speaking with Stephen. I think personally, and this is again, my feeling. I think I'm going to feel a lot more secure knowing that this is my town. This is backing me. They're going to stick behind me. I'm not going to worry about it like maybe at a bank. Again, I know we're not a bank, but I don't see a problem with us offering at four percent. Uh, i- 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 it's very reachable. It's doable. I think if it. You can always go up. It's harder to go down and I think we should stick, stick at that. And I also remember when, when I watched a lot of the finance committee, I know you have recommended thirty-five. I know you've also spoke that you thought thirty-five to forty was something that you were throwing out and I think forty percent, forty K. Uh, as you might have read in that letter back then, when they started this twenty K. Uh, was the, uh, barometer now, uh, twenty K. Um, looks like forty-two thousand plus in, in, in twenty twenty-one. So I think forty thousand isn't too much to ask. And so again, I feel it's a good program. I think it's something that we should do. I may even take advantage of it myself. Um, I don't see, uh, it being, uh, a detriment. If it people want to maybe seek this out first. Um, these are people that have lived in our town, uh, probably longest or, or have, uh. And grown up here. I want to stay here. Uh, this makes it possible for a lot of seniors. There are other options, but some of the options may not be available to them or they're not. Able to take those options. This might make it easier. The paperwork that has to be done is always difficult. No matter if you're doing with social security or not, it's always takes a little work.
Thank you.
Garfield, Lee.
Thank you. Um, Phil, could you just, um, provide the number of, of a couple, both on social security again? What, what it is right now?
Uh, well, again, it's, uh, let me be clear what that number is and what it isn't, you know.
But roughly.
All it represents is just the nationwide average benefit.
Okay, yeah.
Is eighteen thousand. Is eighteen thousand six hundred.
Okay, per per person.
Hypothetical couple is two times that number. But again, we we know it's always going to be different. Uh, it's going to be for a wide variety of reasons, but we're just just using that as a as a rough, rough starting point.
I mean, I I, you know, I I really don't want anyone to be left behind. I I would hate for seniors to to feel the stress that are are just barely getting by and and have no place to go. So I want to make sure that we provide an ability for for seniors to to keep their house for that reason. Um, but I do want to make sure that they have the best options and they're where the best options that, you know, possibly working with a bank might be better than going to the to the town. So I would just hope that we, whatever we decide, that we would be able to provide some guidance without, you know, putting too much um too much extra work on our tax collector and to and to Ross at the moment. Uh, you know, providing guidance of of some of the options, because um I think there are options. And, you know, th- this should really be the last, the last option. And um so it's that kind of finding that sweet spot. And um so, you know, I think it's the right thing to do. I'm just trying to find the sweet spot.
Vivian Orlovsky, very briefly.
Um, that, thank you, Steve. Um, I just wanted to clarify something that I interviewed assessors and associate assessors at several towns that have been doing this for a number of years. And they all stressed that the application process and reviewing the application was really very simple for them. For the applicant, it does involve clearing any other uh outstanding mortgages or any other uh trusts or things like that. But that time falls on the applicant, not on the assessor's office. So, for example, the associate assessor in Newton, where they have the highest number of exemptions in the whole state, uh sixty nine exemptions, he said that it takes him about a half an hour to to re- to review an application. Um, currently, our assessor's office um reviews, um according to the um uh data from the Finance Committee, it reviews um a number of, was it sixteen of um actual exemptions where the town forgives a certain amount of the taxes. And those applications involve having to check assets as well as income. Uh, the deferral does not check assets, it only checks income. So there's much less work for the assessors. So I um I I agree with Ross, who's who seems to have a more um, how to put it, um, realistic view of of what this will mean. It could mean some extra work. I mean, there will be applications, but the the fears ex- expressed by some members of the Select Board uh really don't jive with uh what other towns told me. For example, the town of Norwell, they have eleven thousand people, they get between six and eight applications a year. There are two people in the assessor's office for a town of of eleven thousand. So they can manage with two people in the assessor's office. So I hear again, I don't think it would be an extra burden uh on them.
Garfield.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate what Vivian's saying. I think it would not be an extra burden. Um, i- and the reason why I say this, it's it's could be part of the uh job description, if you will, when you're giving uh something to do, that's your job, that's what you do.
Lee.
Um, a question on uh not checking assets. So are you saying that someone could have quite a um a hefty amount of assets and and that's not factored into this?
Ross, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I I think they're not looking at assets like, you know, you're sort of counting your home and things along those lines. It's strictly based on income. Total income for the for the for the property.
But if if they owned other property and had other, you know, maybe it wasn't liquid, but if they had, you know, property elsewhere, I mean, does that take into account that they could sell off property to to pay for this? You know, this.
If it was generating income, we'd look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it's it's not, the 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 various programs for these property tax exemptions in this program, they're all unique and they all have different tests. And like Vivian said, some include assets and some don't. So it it's hard to sort of figure out, you know, i- it's not logical how they all kind of work together, but but Vivian's uh is correct that it doesn't look at assets.
Do um do we know if reverse reverse mortgages? Look at, I'm just thinking the options for people. So if do we know that the options that um banks offer, do they look at assets or is it just?
I I I'm I'm just speculating, right? So we don't know exactly what they're going to look at, but I would say, yes, they would. Um, and I would say that uh in my in my opinion, we we we've spent a lot of time on this very extreme hypothetical scenario where an uh an individual would have a reverse mortgage and then also seek seek a deferral. I I I don't, uh, I don't think that would happen. And uh it's it's just, it's it's not particularly, uh, again, it's extremely unlikely. Um, I don't know if that, maybe you weren't asking that, but I think that's also a relevant point.
So it se- seems to me, you know, I'm in favor of the senior tax deferral. I think we we already offer it, but I think we should publicize it and I think we should change the parameters. And and I think, starting at an area where we're comfortable so that we're not inundated, which I don't think we would be anyways, uh, the thirty five thousand makes sense. Um, the Finance Committee did a lot of work. And I respect the four percent. I'd probably be more comfortable with five, but I respect that. What we're doing tonight, if so, if we so choose, is to make a recommendation, uh, accept their recommendation and send it to the town meeting. And ultimately, the taxpayers are the one who's going to vote on this. So I I was at almost all the Finance Committee meetings and this was well thought out. So do I have a motion from someone?
Can I say something before Lee makes the motion?
And then Garfield's got to stand up, so yes.
Okay, just be, I'm sorry, you want to, does Garfield first?
No, no, you can go ahead.
It's just because I've heard it from three of us. Um, I knew I I kind of agree with Lee. I don't want us, I want us to be the last resort, um, which is why I prefer five percent. Um, so if a four percent motion is given and fails, I will be supporting a five percent motion, but I sort of know how Lee wants to do it.
Yeah, is this a discussion or are we voting?
We can discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I I'm feeling the same urge to to go for five percent and just to say to to start with something, um, because it can always be changed. Um, but, you know, I I'm comfortable going with the Finance Committee um recommendation, but I my gut reaction is is to to kind of play it safe, at least for one year, so we get a sense if if we're close to the sweet spot um and adjusting it. So that's, that's my um inclination, but there is a, um, I think there's a motion. Was yours a motion, Steve, for four percent?
There hasn't been a motion.
We're still in discussion, okay.
Yep, Garfield has to stand up, so I'll let Garfield go.
Right, I I just feel adamantly that four percent would be fine. I don't see why we need to think we need to tax these people on one more percent. Uh, four percent, I think, is is not unreasonable. It's not too low. Again, like everything else works in this world. If it's too low, it will go up, just like everything else. Nothing goes down. So let's start at the base. And then again, as uh when you go to the grocery store, what you bought meat for last week costs more this week. So let's look at it that way. Let let let's look at it as four percent to start. And if we need to, we can go higher as everything else does in the world.
It just seems like there are three of us who like five percent and one who would would have liked it had the Finance Committee said it.
Eric, I'm curious about Eric's, Eric's quiet. I don't want you to get get away from this.
No, I I I guess the way I would look at it is is I would feel good if we started it this year at five percent, I would say. And 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 like all things in banking and in loans, they do fluctuate. They they do go up, they do go down. Um, I'm on the cautionary side. Um, I would like to ease in with this. I'm good with the thirty five percent. Uh, I would feel better if it was at five percent, to be honest with you.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we set the terms at the Finance Committee said amend the uh or leave the four percent as is and and make the uh thirty five thousand, forty thousand.
Okay, so Garfield's recommendation is forty thousand and four percent. Do I have a second? I do not hear a second. Do I have another motion?
Um, you want to do it, Lee?
Uh, sure. Um, I make a motion to uh for the senior tax referral to set a rate at five percent with the income limit at thirty five thousand dollars.
Garfield, a second.
I I'll second it for discussion. I wouldn't have a problem with forty, which is keeping up with inflation. I don't know how others feel.
Well, we'll find out when we vote, won't we?
I I I guess I'd hate to vote this. Does it, does anybody want to say if they would prefer?
Yeah, I mean, I I'd I'd like to make it so helps. So I I don't want to say it's so low that it it's not helpful. So I I guess, could I ask Philip, um, thirty five th- percent, I mean, or thirty five thousand dollars, is that not? You know, I I again, I don't want to make it the engine.
Again, we're
Yeah.
We we had these conversations in the Finance Committee, sort of walking around in the dark a bit. I mean, again, the I wouldn't focus too, I you might be thinking about two times eighteen thousand six hundred.
Yeah.
The reality is that, you know, uh, you and I are not receiving the benefits, so we we don't know, but you'll have, you'll typically have the uh one individual of a married couple receiving the full benefit and then the spouse may be receiving a smaller benefit. So I only say that just just so to make it less significant, the the two times eighteen thousand six hundred. That that is just a very broad guideline as as what the benefit, what social security benefits are.
The reason I'm leaning towards forty is because that's the, you know, the cost of living from when it was twenty would now be forty. Um, I'll vote yes for whatever you propose.
Um, yeah.
I had my hand up before, Lee.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, again, I will state, as Lee just noted, she said she doesn't want to make it so people can't uh use the benefit. So and I'm saying, well, let's make it so they can and make it a four percent. I don't know why we're getting hung up thinking we're a bank. We're not a bank, we know that. Let's think of people, what, and Lee, I'm su- I'll say it, I'm very surprised that you that that that's what you say, because this is a people issue. And I'm thinking people. And I think that makes it much easier for people. So I'm, I'm very surprised at that.
So I think there's a balance, Garfield, between the town and the the people. And I do not think that five is so onerous or thirty five is so onerous that it would discourage people. Um, and I think, to be honest, after listening to the Finance Committee, with all due respect, they were walking around in the dark for three or four meetings. They they did their best and they, it was very good. But they will be the first ones to tell you that it's not all scientific, just things not. Uh, Phil, would you agree to that?
No, I I I thank you. I would definitely agree. I mean, we, the key is, i- in a perfect world, we would have um you know, you know, a a a full spreadsheet of all of the incomes of our residents who are senior citizens, and we can make a very scientific assessment of who we wanted to help and who we thought felt shouldn't be eligible for the program. But we we don't have that information available. So that's why we, uh, again, we're trying to be, we're trying to be open and honest when we're walking around in the dark. I mean, you know, I mean, and and it's important, I, my, one last thing and I'll I'll shut up is I think we always had sort of a a overriding tone in our conversation that, hey, you know, we don't know how this is going to work. We don't know the interest in the program. So why don't we do it for a year at some middle of, middle of, uh, middle of the range type of criteria and see how that goes? I think if we have specific information of a list of seniors who applied and were just over our eligibility criteria, then my sense is we would all support modifying the criteria to help those people out. We're not trying to you know, cut people off who need the help. We're trying to
Absolutely.
Understand where the need is. And we sort of have to start somewhere, and that's how we got to our recommendation.
Yeah.
Thank you, Phil, Lee.
Um, so so I absolutely agree. I I think we need to start somewhere. And by all means, I think we need to make this uh something that will help people. So and it's really that kind of going between, you know, between two stools until we have the data. Um, and I think, you know, once this is is starts, we'll be able to get a good sense of, you know, are we losing people because of five thousand dollars or a percentage point? So um I I would like to withdraw my motion, though, um, and make a new motion if if the.
I'll withdraw the second, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Lee.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that um we uh set a five percent interest rate with a forty thousand dollar income um uh limit.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
I, well, hold on. What what is? I'm not quite sure how I would vote if I agree with half of this, the the Lee's um ethic, if you will. How how does that? I don't know how to how to work that.
Um, you can't vote in a half, so you'd either say, you either say it's a good compromise, I'll vote for it, or you say I'm still not comfortable and you vote against it.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I would look at it.
Okay.
Okay, um, did we lose that?
Well, I'm here, my battery's dying, I'm trying to plug it in.
Okay, good, as long as I still have you there. So roll call vote. So and this is at forty at five percent, just so everyone's clear. Garfield?
No.
Uh, Eric?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
And no, it passes three to two. So it does pass. Thank you very much, everyone. Good spirited debate. Okay, next, we have the Housatonic Improvement Committee. We promote some people here. Mark, help me. So this is the Housatonic Improvement Committee charrette presentation. I have, hopefully I have Dan somewhere. There he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Angela, I don't see. Um, is there anyone else standing besides Angela and you?
We're we're the only two that are presenting. I I don't know who else is on.
Yeah, I don't, that's fine. Okay, go right ahead.
All right. Uh, again, thank you, board, for um giving the, giving us this time tonight. I know it's been a long meeting. Um, but I certainly appreciate the time, kind of review what we've come up with um for proposal for the Housatonic School after our um design charrette that happened about a month and a half ago. So just to kind of a recap of what's happened, Mark, and if you can go to the next slide, um, next couple slides right up to the executive summary, that would be great. There we go, thank you. Um, as as you were well aware and as the public is aware, um, the Housatonic Improvement Committee was formed in December of twenty nineteen with our first meeting in June of twenty twenty. Um, and the main goal was to foster the social and cultural well-being of Housatonic. Over the year and a half, the committee explored and examined many existing documents, including the town's master plan, uh Berkshire Blueprint two point O, Housatonic Vision, visionary report of two thousand and four, the Housatonic Task Force of two thousand and eleven report, current zoning issue or current current zoning bylaws. Um, the past RFPs and Grey House uh Partner's Proposal, which was the latest um proposal that happened several, about three years ago. Um, examining all those documents, we came up with a um some I, some uses that we felt would uh kind of um go along with all those reports and kind of summarize those reports. We found that there is many uses that were kind of held true through the years over the last seventeen years. We kind of put those uses together and listed the assistance of the Western Massachusetts AIA, which is American Institute of Architects, to organize a design charrette. We presented those uses as well as the same packet that we had been working off of to to the group, to the Western Mass AIA group. And on October thirtieth, five volunteer architects got together to um perform a design charrette. During which time they kind of went through the process, a couple of them poured the school. Um, they kind of decided to go at this as a group approach, to come up with um some schematic or some very basic designs. Um, and Mark, if you want to kind of roll to the designs, we'll kind of go into those. So they came up with essentially two concepts. With the basement and first floor being the same in both concepts, the difference was the third floor where they, where they included residential spaces. In the net, and if you go one more slide, Mark, we can see that, or a couple more slides, actually, to the, to the top floor, if you will.
Perfect.
Tell me when to stop, Dan. Yep, that's good right there. Thank you. So this is the first option, which, which includes four bed, four two-bedroom apartments, one, I'm sorry, three one-bedroom apartments and one studio apartment. This would entail the whole of the whole top floor, second floor or third floor, however you're looking at it. And if you go one more slide for me, Mark, this was the alternative to that, which would include six two-bedroom units. Now, if you kind of roll back, all the way back to the basement plan, if you don't remember.
I'm sorry, back to what?
Yes, back, back to the basement plan. Two more slides. One more, thank you. So the basement, which, which is again, thought of as usable space, would be potentially supporting any tenant spaces, but it would also have the potential for a commercial kitchen as well as some other public spaces if needed, as well as restrooms if needed. Now, if you go ahead, one more slide, Mark, that brings us to the first floor, in which would all be kind of a commercial space as needed. You can notice that the architects all did decide that a elevator would be needed. If there's any kind of public space, it would be required to have it for handicap accessibility. So the bottom floor basement and the first floor would require an elevator stop. It was discussed that for a small amount of increase in cost, the third stop to the second floor could also be considered. If the third floor remains all residential, it is not required to have the elevator to go to that point. So again, I'm going to, at this point, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Angela to kind of discuss some of the financial aspects that we kind of looked at, that came out of the charrette.
Okay, thanks, Dan, and thank you to the select board. I am going to very briefly run through the financial projections, and I'm also going to give you some corrections that need to be made to the narrative, and I'll be very careful about telling you where that happens. So I think everyone should know that the town has six hundred thousand dollars in designated funds for this building. My understanding is that it's for the envelope of the building, which would be roofing and windows. And then the town is also named the responsible party to abate any hazardous materials in the building. So those two things are already sort of committed by the town. We feel like there may be other funds available through grants or various sources that the town has, community development block grants, community impact funds, the Community Preservation Act, and the ARPA funding. So that's something that the, the select board will have to talk about. Let me tell you about some of the assumptions we made to make these financial predictions. First, we decided to use the interest rate of two percent, which is what the town can borrow money, the rate that the town, at which the town can borrow money. And we developed this chart showing borrowed amounts between two million and seven million dollars, and what the debt service that would correspond to those amounts would be. And then we projected some rentals just from the residential housing. So in the option one floor plan, if we assumed that we were charging rent at eighty percent of the area meeting and income, so that they would be affordable, and we assumed that only one person was renting, even a two-bedroom, just for discussion purposes, the rents per month would equal a total of ninety four hundred dollars. Again, if there was a mix of numbers of people in each apartment, one, two, three, or four people, the rents would be higher than that. In option two, with the six two-bedroom apartments, again, with using only one person in a two-bedroom apartment, the rent would, the rents would generate seven thousand fifty dollars per month. If there were three persons living in each apartment, the rents would be nine thousand sixty dollars. So the estimated income from the residential portion of this building, and here's where our change comes into the narrative, would be between seven thousand and fifty dollars a month to ninety four hundred a month. Okay? Then, if we go to floors, the basement level and the first floor, and we look at the various different meeting spaces, we used rental rates that are based on a very reliable source appropriate to Housatonic, and we used those numbers to generate the monthly rentals for various spaces based on their square footage. Underneath that chart, go, go to the next slide, Mark, if you would. Interesting. Okay, we're missing some narrative here. Okay, I'll just keep on going. So in this chart, we're using every space that the architects enumerated and the square footage price at different rental rates per foot, fifteen dollars generally, and then eight dollars a square foot, and we come up with fifty seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and change from the non-residential portions of the building. What we didn't project out is what the kitchen slash food preparation area could generate. So if we take the fifty seven ninety-four and we add it to the ninety four hundred, the building could generate around fifteen thousand dollars a month, which falls in between a four and a five million dollar loan amount. So it could carry between four and five million dollars. We're hopeful that, based on our numbers, and certainly more work has to be done, that this will look like a viable project. We are not sure whether the town will take this on. It may make sense to do that, or if it would be a partnership with a private developer. We didn't get into that kind of decision-making. But we are looking at what we assume to be a renovation cost at three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, which would mean it would be around a seven million dollar project, and we'd love to see it happen for the, the village of Housatonic. I'd like to just open the floor for questions about the financial predictions.
Let me just ask, are you done with the presentation so we can take it?
I'm, I can, I can cap it off with our, our actual official recommendations and a.
So why don't you do that before we take questions?
Okay. Excuse me, Mark, if you just want to fast forward to our recommendations, thank you. So these are our official recommendations, and as Angela mentioned, we, we are recommending that the select board require that either through an RFP or as part of a deed, that, that some portion of the building remain in public use. We recommend that the RFP reflects the design charrette and keeps the historic integrity of the building. We recommend that the select board acts proactively to promote the availability of the building, both prior to and during the RFP process. And then, which kind of leads us to a path forward where, what's going, what we envision seeing happening with this, first and foremost, would probably be the phase two environmental is, as soon as we could get a scope and a, the funds were available to kind of start that. We do know that the town is on the hook for any kind of environmental remediation that would need to be, need to happen in the building. The town will actively identify and pursue potential grant fundings for the renovation. Again, this would be to help defer any costs that, that might, so we don't have to put anything else on the taxpayers. The town will move forward with securing the roof with tarps and boarding the windows. I do believe that money has been allocated for that, and you guys are in the process of that. And then, in the event that this does not generate what would be an acceptable proposal, we do ask that the select board bring it back to the Housatonic Improvement Committee prior to putting a final stamp on demolition of the building. And again, that's just so we can chime in as, as part of our charter to, to foster the social and cultural well-being of, of Housatonic, so we can weigh in one more time on the property. And then finally, also, it should also be noted that the, the select board has made this commitment, and the, and the Housatonic Improvement Committee has also been hearing the same thing that, that the, the building lot should remain the building lot, and that the, the sliding hill in the park should not be disturbed or even considered during any part of any RFP or any sale of the property. And it should also be noted, because the question comes up a lot, that there have been parking studies done that do show that some parking can be feasible there. Obviously, a more in-depth parking study would have to be done when the actual uses would be determined. That's, that's what we have for our presentation. I do believe at this point, we will open up the questions from you, do the best we can to answer them.
Sure, go ahead. Ed?
Yeah, first, obviously, thank you. I've been to most of your meetings, and I know how much work you've put into this. I did, I have a question on the numbers. The estimate was it's most likely to be in the seven million dollar range. So I'm not a developer. The difference between rent and what it'll pay for that seems significant. Yes, did I miss something in there?
Yeah, Ed, based on the projections we used, and they're very conservative. The building could generate about fifteen thousand two hundred, let's say, a month, which would, which would float between a four million and a five million dollar project. And we estimate that the total cost to renovate and bring the whole building up to code would be seven million. Now, keep in mind that the town has the six hundred thousand and has to remediate the hazardous materials. So let's just say that's a million and a half. So if we take the million and a half and add it to four million, which is low, then the gap, so that would be five and a half million, the gap is a million and a half dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thanks.
I have someone with their hand up that says the town of Great Barrington. So I'll let them talk, then, Lee.
Thank you, Steve. Sorry, this is Patrick Barrett. I was not able to change my name. I'm signed in.
That's fine. I was looking for you to.
Directly.
I just, I just want to point out that the, the version of this report that Mark is sharing somehow is not the final version that I sent to Amy late last week. So there's some numerical and narrative differences between what, what's shown and, and what the final version is. If you don't have that, I'm happy to resend it to whoever needs it, but, but that's the previous version.
Okay, I appreciate that, Patrick.
Lee?
Thank you very, very much, Housatonic Improvement Committee. I absolutely appreciate all the hard work that you've put into this. A question on timeline. What, what kind of timeline are you guys hoping for? Because, you know, ultimately, the RFP will go out, and then we'll hopefully get some developers that step up, or some, some businesses or organizations that are interested. So are we prepared to wait, you know, three months, six months, a year? And at what stage then do we, do we consider other options?
Well, I, I, I think to answer your first question, I, I think we're, we're looking for the, the select board to kind of move on this as fast as you guys can.
Yep.
Obviously, there's certain limitations there. And honestly, I, I think that's kind of on you at this point, Lee, as to what you guys feel comfortable putting out there for a timeframe is how long the RFP process is.
Well, I noticed that, I was just wondering if you had that discussion, if it's kind of one of these points that we would say, okay, you know, it's been out there, and we haven't gotten any responses. You know, go to, go to, you know, option two.
Yeah, I think that's, that's our choice.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if the HIC had, you know, discussions about that, but.
Angela has her end.
Yeah, so I think it would be really helpful if it's possible to have a joint meeting with the Housatonic Improvement Committee. Make sure Chris Remble is in the room and the select board, because he and I, he and Dan and I met, and we talked about how this could roll out, and I think there are more possibilities than just an RFP. And I don't want to get into that because it's a whole nother discussion, but, you know, given that we have a loose plan and something that looks like it could be viable, I think we should start talking about how it could work pretty quickly.
So the next step will be that we'll ask Mark and Chris to come back with an executive summary, and that could include in there, and we'll invite the Housatonic Improvement Committee, and we'll do that as soon as they can get that out, which is, I think will be fairly quick, but that'll be the next step. So briefly, allow a few people to talk. Charlie Williamson?
Yeah, can you hear me, Steve?
Yes.
All right, I heard the rent was going to be like seven hundred and eighty dollars, so let's round that off to eight hundred dollars a month. Does this also include the electric to the apartment, the heat to the apartment, and the town sewer to the apartment? Because people who are on town sewer, they roughly pay about five hundred dollars a year for town sewer. Are the tenants going to be paying for their town sewer, the heat and electric, or is the town going to be picking up this, this expense?
I think this concept, Dan, or Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, is not that detailed yet. They've handed us a conceptual plan that we need to, to go deeper into, Charlie. So it's a good point, but it, there's no answer yet.
I, I just thought eight hundred hours a month rent isn't covering some of these items.
You're probably right, but we haven't gotten that far yet. We're, we're still in the conceptual stages.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Bill Lorenstein?
Yes, thanks for all the work on this. I know that this is a, and it's concept status, but has the committee considered making the entire building residential as opposed to mixed use? Just, just on, on the basis that there may be more interest or demand for, you know, apartments as opposed to the commercial space?
Phil, if I may, that, that kind of goes back to the history of, of the last seventeen years of this. Most reports that have been done on the building, including some of the visionary studies and the task force studies that all included community surveys, even though they, they are maybe outdated, if you will. All, the sentiment is that nobody wanted full residential. I think part of that is to satisfy some of the community, what the community has wanted, and balance what other potential uses as well, too.
Okay, no, I, I hear you, and I appreciate that, that history. Obviously, you'll, you'll, if you do an RFP, you'll see what interest you get back and where that will take you. Thank you.
So is the board satisfied with our next step, which will be asking Mark and Chris to come back, the next executive summary, as soon as feasible? I mean, it's not going to be next meeting, but at least I don't think it is. Is everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
And, and I say that the Housatonic Improvement Committee, it's a tremendous job. I know it took you a while to do this, it was in-depth, but this, this has been really helpful, and we will invite you to our meetings, our next meeting, when we discuss this, and we'll move this along as quick as possible with you, with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to keep this moving forward. Thank you.
We need, we need to.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is not in our country. Okay, next on our agenda is not in our country pledge. Let me just promote some people. Mark will help me.
Okay, we should be good with all three now.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, let's go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're not going to take up too much of your time. I'm going to give a little introduction. And then Karen will talk a little about the history of Notting Hill County. And I'll share a little about what we're doing now and then Luke will talk about the actual pledge. So my name is Louis Foragraft. I'm a volunteer at Bridge. And I'm here today, along with Karen and Luke, to talk about Notting Hill County, which began as a Notting Hill Town in 1995 and is a nationwide movement about increasing solidarity when an act of hate happens in the community or preventing acts of hate from happening in the community. And so Karen, would you like to step in, talk about how we got involved?
As Louis said, in 2017, through a citizen initiative that was through the combined efforts of Multicultural Bridge, Berkshire Interfaith Organization and the South County Race Task Force. We decided to become a part of the national Not in Our Town movement in response to racist incidents in our town, in our schools, targeted acts of against religious groups in our community and also increasing concern for our immigrant community in light of changing political climate at that time. We chose Not in Our Town because of its history of success across the country at unifying communities against acts of hate and effectively changing the social climate in those communities by citizens rallying to support those that have been targeted. So we decided to launch a campaign here back in 2017 with, partly because it had a unifying logo that could be identified. It included people making a commitment to not be silent when they witnessed acts of ignorance, hate or intolerance. And it included a collaborative approach across the county. We started out thinking we would do Not in Our Town and then through interest across the county decided we would make it Not in Our County. At that time, members of the select board, as well as many individuals and businesses across the county took the pledge. And that has provided us with a list, I say us, that Multicultural Bridge with a list of people to reach out to when incidents occur and be able to support those citizens that have been targeted. So that's a little background and how we got to the point where we are now and why we're coming back to you now. And I'm going to turn it back over to Louis to reach that part.
Yeah, so the, the purpose of us being here today, thanks Karen. And the purpose of us being here today is it's an invitation. We sent a document that has a link. You can also go to Multicultural Bridge's website and go to the Notting Hill Town link from there. And you can online do the pledge. And this is an invitation for anyone who's interested. This isn't something, the, the way Bridge is thinking about this is not that we're trying to obligate people to do it. It's actually, we want to like enroll and engage people who are interested in, in being involved. The commitment, at its most essential, is small to say the pledge daily. The way I do it for myself is not necessarily that I say the exact pledge every day, but every day I will reflect upon, have I done anything today? That's kind of moved things forward. Sort of tried to make a little shift. So it's an active engagement and commitment. And so this is an invitation to, for the select board, you know, the newly elected new select, new select board to consider being a part of that in whatever capacity you can. Luke?
Yeah, thanks Louis and thanks Karen and thanks, select board members and everyone doing your part to take care of this town. It's a lot of work tonight and it's been a long meeting and I'm sure this is not rare for you all. I'd like to read the pledge and I'd also like to probably, well, speak for me, but I think I can speak on behalf of Louis and Karen. Bridge is all about building relationships and if anyone wants to sit down for a cup of coffee or have a cup of tea to just talk about what this pledge means and, and how to make it more of a practice like Louis is talking about. We'd be happy to talk about all the, all the ways to, to plug into social justice in the Berkshires. And, and so here's the pledge. I commit to working together with my neighbors to create safer, more integrated communities for all residents in Berkshire County. I do not stay silent in the face of intolerance or hate based on race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, identity, ethnicity, country of origin, ability, or any other factor. I work to acknowledge and heal all forms of hate, bigotry and bullying. And I pledge to renew my commitment to this work every day. Yeah, and so just like Louis said, we're asking for folks to consider signing for folks that have signed to, to think about what recommitting to the pledge means for you.
Thank you very much. I was here when we first did this and it's as important that now as it was then. And I'm glad, you're always welcome to come back and remind us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizen speak time. Charlie Williamson, go right ahead.
Okay, Charlie Williamson, 48, Blue Hill Road. I've noticed here in the last week and a half, we've had outside contractors planting some vegetation on Main Street. I'd like to know what the vegetation is and do you have a ballpark price, what this is costing using these outside contractors?
We'll bring that into the next meeting, Charlie.
Okay, well, what I wanted to bring up is if it's what I think they're putting there, like swamp grass, this is going to be a problem come next summer. There are blind spots on our pedestrian crossingways. Swamp grass grows to at least five foot high. You're going to have accidents at the town. I do believe we could have used our own town employees to plant this material. And all I'm trying to say is I would like to see the selectmen take a three or a five-year project of improving the traffic problem in Great Barrington. I know we're working on Lake Mansfield, spending money on that. We spent money on charging stations. It's time to get in pedestrian crossing lights on all this crossing on Main Street. People just walk across there and stop the traffic. You got green lights and nobody's moving. I appreciate if somebody would put it on an agenda to look at it. It, it's serious. You can't get through the town of Barrington. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Vivian Erloski.
Thank you, Steve. I just want to make a brief comment thanking the finance committee for all the research and discussion on senior tax deferral and the select board for making this program or recommending that this program for town meeting be made more accessible to senior, long-time residents. I would also like to follow up briefly on Ed Abrams' concerns about other taxpayers having to foot this program. Deferral is not an expense and it does not change tax rates. The deferrals are, are not in any way charged as an expense because it does not reduce seniors' taxes or give them any funds. The town gets all the taxes that are due, just paid later and with interest. So repay, and repayment is secured by the first lien on the deed, as we heard from the finance committee. And no senior can charge more than 50% the value of their home. So the town is essentially guaranteed to get that money, no matter what happens with the real estate market. So just to be clear, the elderly tax deferral safety net is different from exemption programs that Great Barrington already has, and rightly so, for very low-income seniors. Exemption programs are limited and they only very slightly reduce the overall revenues for the town. And they only slightly reduce most tax bills because they're limited to something like a thousand, a thousand dollars. So there's a big difference and this should not be seen as anything that will impact people's taxes or the overall tax levy.
Thank you, Vivian. Seeing no other hands up, so we'll select for our time. We'll start with Garfield.
I have nothing, thank you.
Eric?
Nothing, thank you.
Ed?
Yeah, just quickly, since I was mentioned in that. You know, the town needs to take in $32 million. If less comes in, everyone else pays a little bit more. It's pennies, which is what I said. It's just pennies because it's a small amount. Ultimately, we will get it back. So if you live here until it's all paid back and pay taxes, in the end, it didn't matter. But in a given year, it will raise other people's taxes just a little bit. Thanks.
Lee?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Media time. Seeing none, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.